Possible choice, which is broad exposure of our children. We have to have one plan. It's another point I want to make. We have our kids that are in high school, have children or have brothers and sisters in the elementary school or the middle school. You cannot have, you have to have one plan across the district. This is not one of those cases where we can have every district with its own plan. So I would like us, much as I am in favor of local control, local board control, I think we need to have one plan. I think it needs to be the hybrid model and we need to make it the plan for the full district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. I'm going to ask Chris Pratt now if he wants to comment on any of the discussion he's heard so far. Then what I would like to do is go back around to board members and, you know, once again by a roll call, ask those board members if they have specific questions for Chris. Chris, are you ready?
Yeah, you know, I just said there's a few things I wanted to comment on is like, I said it to begin in my opening statement is that we don't have all the answers. And no matter what situation or what plan we roll out, is everyone's, there are going to be issues with it. And we know that it has to be a very fluid plan that we're working with and we're going to constantly go back and revisit it. But like so many other board members and public in the chat have said, we really do have to put the safety and well-being of the students and the staff first. We don't know what this is going to look like. We don't know what's going to look like a week from now. We don't know what's going to look like a month from now. This plan is going to allow us to make those adjustments as we need to, whether they get better or they get worse. You know, so, you know, that's why I'm advocating for this and I'm asking, you know, like I said at the beginning, I'm asking for the boards that we need the board to make a decision on a plan tonight. And I'm asking to either approve this hybrid plan or, um, if you approve the hybrid plan, move forward with 100% remote instruction. But us educators need to start getting ready for opening the school, no matter what it's going to look like in a few weeks. And so for me, it's, I'm, I'm asking for a decision either way tonight and not have anything be pushed off. And to, to, to finish that, I would like to have Dr. Carey talk a little bit about what instruction looks like on the A B days. And then have Director of Student Services, Andy Haas, talk about what it looks like for those students on I E Ps, because I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Lynn, what can you tell us?
So far, um, this is what, this is what the, um, the plan is. On Mondays, the, the teacher would make one lesson planned for a week so that it would be taught twice. What we're really hoping for is that on, um, both the A days and the B days, we're pushing the, the reading, uh, instruction and the math instruction, uh, with the, in, in place. Uh, we hope to have tables where students can come in small groups but be separated by some kind of Plexiglas and with the teacher. On Wednesdays, the goal is, and this is, it hasn't been talked out yet, the principals, we haven't really gotten the nuts and bolts, but hopefully it'll be science and social studies, uh, project-based learning, at home on Wednesdays with a meeting with the teacher, laying out what's happening. If there's materials, they're handed out either for the B folks on Friday or for the A folks on, uh, Tuesday. So they would be getting the full extent. They would also, um, receive their recess, their, um, P E. I'm assuming they would get music, but there's no singing, so. Uh, but these kinds of specials will still go on, art, these things will happen, the students will engage in them, uh, as they always have. The, uh, the difference is, of course, the math and the reading will really be the focus of A day, of the A days and the B days. But, uh, on the Wednesdays, there'll still be learning, there's still writing, there's still reading and, um, some project-based learning, some kind of science and social studies that, uh, will fill out their, their week.
Thank you, Lynn. Andy, are you with us?
I am, David.
Andy, do me a favor, um, because we have a lot of people here tonight and maybe not all of them know, um, what you do at the S U. Would you just give us a brief introduction?
Sure, I'm Andy Haas, I'm the Director of Student Support Services. Um, we cover, uh, kids who, um, receive services through special education and oversee kids who are on 504 plans. So I, I think a couple of, um, just quick points, um, and, and David, please check me when I go into acronyms because I'm very good at that. So the first thing I just want to say is that, uh, we've run a very successful extended school year, uh, for some of our most neediest kids, uh, in person, and we've used a hybrid model. We felt that bringing, um, all of the kids into a building at one time was not, um, safe and that we wanted to provide kids within person because remote learning doesn't work successfully for those kids. So, um, what we, what we did was create a, a very similar hybrid model that we're proposing here for, uh, the whole S U. And we've had it, you know, we've learned some things from it. One of the things we've learned is like when a kid says they don't feel well, you know, we all go into a panic mode right now and we're learning to manage that and, and, and we're doing it successfully. We're learning how to teach kids to wear masks, um, who don't traditionally wear a mask. So it's, it's, it's been a social, um, piece for us to teach kids how to wear their mask. Where we started out at that, that first week, you know, we had our little kids. We're having a lot of difficulty wearing masks where now as we're finishing up, the majority of our kids are wearing their masks almost the entire time. And I know it's only four hours and, and whatnot, but, um, it is, it is a positive way of, of looking at, you know, that dipping the toe in the water and that's what we wanted to try and do so we would know what we're going to do. You know, one of the things in, within special education is a student's I E P or Individualized Education Plan drives the modifications that they will need for their curriculum and it also drives their services. So one of the things we need to do and one I would really implore, uh, the board to, we need a decision is we have to revise almost 300 I E Ps at the beginning of school. And we need, we need a clear direction of which way we're going so we can revise those I E Ps. It doesn't matter what model we're in, we need to revise I E Ps because how we, uh, had them at the end of last year, the state is now saying they have to be revised, so. So we're really looking at how we're, um, going to be responding based on a decision tonight. Um, any delay is going to delay how we provide services for kids and, and that's a legal issue. We are looking, just as Dr. Carey was talking about, um, with the smaller groups, we can push our case managers into classrooms more, uh, and, and support kids in the classroom, which then, uh, can also free up some paraprofessionals to do, to support kids on the off days, um, when they're home. Um, and so we're looking at a very similar model that we were using, uh, during the dismissal last year of support, um, for kids when they're not in the classroom, um, using paraprofessionals, but also using case managers. Case managers will also be touch base with, um, with kids on Wednesday and with families. The same would go for related services. Um, we would do a blend of remote, but also in-person with our related service folks. Um, and again, the, it would look different. Um, and that's where we have to sit down with and revise each, you know, I E P with the families and with the team to have that discussion of what's it going to look like. Um, but we're, we're looking at how we could, if we can push into a cohort, um, and not pull kids out. That's what we're going to try and do the most we can. But we may have to do some individuality and whatnot. There may be incidents where a team might decide if we're in a hybrid model, that more than two days is appropriate for that student. And, and that would be a discussion that we would have as a team and make on an individual basis, um, using data, um, to drive what we're making decisions for. So that's how we're approaching it. It's, it's been a lot of waiting for us. Um, we, we've got contingency plans based on, on, on decisions, uh, but we're ready to move forward.
Thank you, Andy. Chris, is there anything else before I invite direct questions, uh, from board members to you?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Once again, I'm going to, uh, shake it up just a little bit. Lynn Morgan, do you have any direct questions for, uh, Chris Pratt or Lynn or Andy?
Yes. The, so, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, what do the A group do on Thursday, Friday? And the B group do on Monday, Tuesday? Are that, is that online learning? Was it clear?
Yes, so, um, the A group will meet on Mondays and Tuesdays. Everyone will meet on Wednesday. The idea is to have a curriculum that doesn't have to be repeated. Everyone will get the same curriculum on Wednesdays. And then the B group will come on Thursdays and Fridays and do the same curriculum that was done on Mondays and Wednesdays. When the students are not in school on the alternate times, they will be having assignments to do at home, uh, projects to do at home and, uh, extension activities to practice what they're learning. We also have, um, some, some, uh, technology programs. We have a, a program that they, a computer program, they will be able to, uh, practice their skills and the teacher will assign different, you know, pieces of work on that. Uh, again, the students will all have computers the same way they did, uh, earlier, uh, in the spring. So they'll be able to access those online, uh, resources that we will also have for those days they're not in school.
So in reality, they are getting five days of lessons?
Most definitely, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mixture of online, on, online and in-person.
Yes, that's true.
Anything else, Lynn?
No, I'm just, along with everybody else, so thankful for all the work that has been put into this and all the comments that have been made tonight. It's really broadened my perspective of what's actually going on and thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Lynn. George Smith, questions for either Lynn or Chris or Andy?
Yes, please. Lynn, you just said that there's going to be instruction on the off days. If I recall, the other night, that was not, uh, what I was told. Can you clarify that there, on the off days when kids are not in school, they're going to have instruction from a teacher?
What they're going to have, the teacher will make plans for the whole week like they always do. What will happen is they will make two in-school plans. One plan for everybody for Wednesday and two days of out-of-school plans. So what will happen is they will be teaching in-person on two days. Each, each pod, we call them pods, will be getting two days of in-face instruction. We're hoping to push the reading and the math. And the days they're not in, they will have assignments to do. They will have resources that they've taken home and need to do then to, to return to school. And they will also have digital resources to work from. So they will be very occupied, yes, they will continue to be occupied doing their learning practices and their learning skills uh, on the days that they are not in school. So particularly when we're talking about third, fourth, fifth and up, they can be doing, they could be working on research or reports or, uh, learning. Definitely there's going to be reading and when you read, we're going to ask them to write about their reading so that they can extend their, um, their practices, their, their knowledge base in that. So, uh, it's true.
Okay.
They will have instruction. They won't have face-to-face because they'll be home, but they will know what they're having to do because it will be explained in the classroom by the teacher before they, uh, have their days of remote learning. And on Wednesday, the teacher will have a lesson, uh, for the kids that, uh, will set them up for that day.
Yeah, let me. Question, George?
I'm sorry.
What's your next question, George?
I, can I add the George's? Is that, now keep in mind that also is like, like I said the other night, we're not talking direct instruction on those days. Like Lynn said, we're talking about lessons, um, to be provided for the kids. And many of the schools are going to have, like, uh, counselors and interventionists and sped support. A lot of these, most kids are still going to have those supports in place in having, um, like I said, interventionists and counselors and special ed supports reaching out to them on those remote days. So it might not be just instruction, but they, if they have questions, they will have that. Keep in mind, we still have to find a way to, um, take attendance for these students as well. So even on the remote days, they might, it might look similar to what it did when we were in, um, closure and ki, all kids, no matter where they are, would have to start the day with their classroom, whether they're home or in the building. So I just wanted to add to that.
Thank you, that's more of what I was looking for.
George, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, George.
No, I was just saying, thank you, that was more of what I was looking for. If, basically, kids are going to, most kids aren't self-motivated, they're just going to do work. So that's what I was looking for, is that there will be somebody somewhere in this grand cyberspace that will be able to assist them. I know I had another one here, bear with me. Uh, so I saw something in the comments earlier that, um, was a question and I just wanted to make, I just wanted to know if you could clarify for everybody. I think I already know the answer, but I wanted you to clarify. Is this a hybrid option with the option to do full homeschool? If people need to, or is this a one or the other?
No, this, what we're trying to do, George, is, um, with the rate, with the most recent, amendments to the procedures that we want, we're offering the hybrid solution for the first six weeks. And, um, if we are able to, um, get the Vermont Virtual Learning done, it's, it, it would be done through the school. We'd have certain teachers that are tied to that program. And, and so we're trying to make sure that, um, one, that we have to get those attendants into the state next week so they know which kids are doing that. So it's not one or the other, we're, we're trying to offer both. But it's for the, it's, it's really the, we're really looking to, the, the high schools always had the virtual, um, learning and teachers tied to that. So now we're adding the, um, elementary and the middle school piece to that. So it's not one or the other, it's, we're hoping to have both.
If they choose to go with the Vermont, um, Virtual Learn Collaborative, Learning Collaborative, that would be a commitment at least until, uh, for the whole fall semester. And they would have a chance to change over to classroom if all of a sudden there's no more COVID and they want to go back to school. But that would happen at the spring because we, you know, you don't want to interrupt their learning. But yeah, it's one or the other. Now, you're saying homeschooling, I don't want to confuse virtual learning from the Vermont Collaborative, the A O E program with homeschooling. Homeschooling is when a parent takes care of the curriculum and does that themselves. Uh, this one, the curriculum's done, the teachers that will volunteer, the curriculum will be done, the, all those great resources. It's a great learning program, but that is a commitment at least until the spring semester or the winter semester.
Yes, thank you for correcting my verbiage, I definitely said it wrong. Were there any parents involved in the task force?
No, there were no parents involved in the task force.
Good. I just wanted to point out, um, my one last thing, or maybe two, but, um, first thing, um, a teacher, I don't remember who it was, I apologize, but I appreciate your comment, um, after you spaced out your room that a, a student in, in elementary level would be, uh, potentially 30 feet away. I don't think I really need to mention anything more on that, that's, that's pretty self-explanatory. And also, um, I had no burning desire to be sitting here with you all tonight. It was something that was, it's duty-driven and, um, I appreciate all the efforts and I'm sorry for everybody that is going to be ticked off one way or the other with the result of the evening. As somebody close to me said recently, there is absolutely no very good option for everybody and, that's, that's where I conclude, thank you.
Thank you, George. Brenda Farkas, are you with us and do you have questions for, um, uh, Chris or Lynn or Andy?
Yes, so I have a question. So you're saying that every student in the district does have a computer and internet available to them to do the, the list. I, I had a family that I worked with before, did not have that available to them, not in the state. And the library was their resource. So if we have all these restrictions, I just wanted to know, how is that being? Everybody does have that available?
Yeah, that was one of the first things we did, Brenda, um, as soon as school was out, is that, um, we identified, um, families who were, who had maybe connectivity issues. And those names actually got sent to two different departments at the state so they can identify those areas. But with our schools, our administrators and our teachers, they are so on top of that in regards to, knowing the families who need support. And for them, you know, it's my understanding, the last time I spoke with the principals is that they have it under control and families are identified and we have ways to make sure that they're, they're getting asked access. And no matter what learning looks like, we're still providing the, you know, whether it's through V T L C, they choose that, we're still having all the, um, peripherals and the computing needs that they, to make sure they have an online learning.
Yeah, I thought you had addressed that earlier and it wasn't, I just wanted to make sure. And the other question was, will there be FaceTime with this type of, like if it's remote learning, will there be the FaceTime visits with the teachers for the younger kids? Or like, how does the interaction happen in the hybrid model?
Well, and, well, I mean, in the hybrid model, you know, yes, they would be, we're looking that, they'd probably be FaceTime in the mornings because we need to take attendance, you know, that's, and that's our best way to do it, is that would look similar to what we did, um, in the springtime. Is that no matter where you are, you know, the teach, you know, you would log on if the teacher's in the classroom, it would be the rest of the class. Um, it might look a little different for the, for the high school in regards to how they take attendance because they're not in one class all day. But it would be some sort of, of FaceTime that we would hope that kids would have. Um, in addition to that, like I said, you would have counselors and nurses and teachers, I mean, checking in with students. I mean, the teachers, the parents, everyone did such a fantastic job of checking in with families and students on a regular basis, when we were in closure. I, I don't have any reason to believe that they would do anything other than that. They've just done, done an exceptional job throughout this whole.
Okay, that's all?
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Jason Terry, questions?
Yeah, um, I, uh, saw it in the chat earlier from Carrie Kennedy. She said that she measured the central school rooms today and, uh, no room to fit. And I assumed that the task force had looked at all these options. Would have been helpful to know this on Monday when we were begging for solutions. And I'm just, uh, thank you, Carrie, for doing that, keep up the great work. We were told that there was plenty of room at the central school. So if I personally would have known that, I might have had a different opinion on Monday, so.
I can respond to that. At no point were you told there was plenty of room at any of the schools. And second is, yes, the task force did look at the layout of the rooms in regards to what was needed. What you guys got into on the other night, you would have had, that information wasn't available because it wasn't on the agenda. So you continue to say you don't have information, you're not getting the information. It's because it's not information ready for you to have because it's not on the agenda. I go by the agendas that are, are approved and sent. If you guys want to add the agenda, you can't expect to have information on something that was never there. But at no time were you ever told that any school had more than ample space. The task force did look at all the rooms. Do you want to, so I just wanted to make that clear.
So you didn't say the high school had plenty of room and the only thing in question was the middle school?
No, I said the high school, at the time when I spoke with the, with the principal, if, if we had to, we could put eighth graders into the, um, into the gymnasium. But if it's in the gymnasium, we're still going to have troubles with the optimal temperatures. So no, I never, whatever you're saying, no, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
What else we have?
Nothing.
We're doing it round robin.
I am, I'm starting with the voting members, Jack, and I am working my way over to the non-voting members tonight. Cheryl, I would like to hear from you, please.
Sure, I have, I have one question, uh, I think for Chris or Lynn. Uh, this has to do with the remote learning option from the, um, I don't remember the name, the Vermont Learning Collaborative, Computer Learning Collaborative, whatever. But one of the pieces of information we were giving was that, uh, first of all, as a result of the survey, that 93 students were, uh, said to be interested. Chris, you had indicated there might only be room for 100. Um, is there any latitude to have more if more families do wish for the 100% remote option, which does still allow for these kids to be part of the supervisory union, part of their school and they still get to see their classmates, at least through Zoom. But is there any, any way to deal with that number of 100?
Yeah, we're looking to get that up by adding more, you know, we, we want to identify teachers, um, that really, um, fall into the category of, um, the COVID expectations that they can't come back to school. And, but we want to keep them around, so we're really trying, we want to identify those teachers and get as many as we can, open up slots. For every one teacher, it's 20 to 25 slots of students, so we're looking to up that. And so that was something we, Lynn and I were working on today based on, um, the meeting from the other night because we're, we want to get those numbers up because we're seeing as the days go on, you see more and more people interested in the, um, in the remote instruction. So, but, you know, I think the only thing holding us up right now is if, you know, we get more students that want it than we have slots for, then that'll be a tough one. That's why we're, right now, we're really focusing on, on, on the students that are, have health issues or someone in their immediate family that they live with have else use, health issues that really would, no matter what the option was, would not be able to come to school. So that's who we want, want to start with. But yeah, we're looking to try to find ways to increase the seats for the kids, so anyone who wants them will have them.
So Cheryl, um, what I've done, and actually I just had to cancel it because there's been no vote yet. I had a, um, a survey going out, again, to all the families of the S U, again, actually saying, if you are really, you know, if you're interested in this program, fill out your name, your address, your student's name, grade, what school you're affiliated with, so that I can really get a, a true number. Now, I've already seen that people are saying, what am I mute? No, I'm not, am I, no.
No, you're not muted, Lynn, you're doing a great job.
You're fine.
Well, thank you. So what I've seen is, oh, that's only going to give us four days and that is the truth. I'm asking to have them back on Tuesday because I have to turn that whole entire report around the next day to the state or to the Vermont Virtual Learning Academy. I also have one, uh, ready to go to the teachers, the certified teachers. There are teachers that I, I'm not going to name, but there are teachers really do not feel, for whatever reason, they have a medical reason, they have people in their family they're worried about bringing it home to, or they have childcare issues. These are the people that, if they're certified teachers, I would like to give them this opportunity. This opportunity to teach with the Vermont Virtual Learning Academy is amazing because they provide the curriculum, they provide the resources, they provide all the work. All the teachers, well, not all, the teachers developing a relationship with the students. What I was told was that Virtual Learning Academy will prioritize our teachers to work with our students. And they will be able to have a, a morning meeting with their class, their, the class they would have been in if there had been no COVID. So I'm hoping that would happen on Wednesday, we haven't firmed up anything. So the long story short is, this is a great program. The teachers have to commit for a full year, students one semester. However, there is a three-credit, there's three courses that are involved and it's all embedded in the work they're doing. So they would, they would start out and then they would do a portfolio of what they've learned and then they would take another course about bridging that gap. And then finally, they would do a practicum, uh, which is essentially what they're doing. So, um, that is $3,600. I'm hoping I can get CARES money to pay for the, the tuition for these teachers who are willing to make a commitment to work at home. You know, there is, there are flexible hours. What, what it involves is working at home, um, you're going to give one lesson a week on one content. And then you lay out the whole week for the kids. And then you lay out the whole week for the kids, but you call the kids every other day. So if you have, you know, fifteen kids in your class. You're calling seven on A day, seven on B day, the first seven A's on A day and B day. There's also, the district will also provide a coordinator who will call the parents or the families once a week. So if we have a hundred families, we're going to hire someone or have someone on staff that can't be actually in the classroom. That would call these families once a week to make sure everything's going smoothly. How do you feel? Your kid's learning? What can we do to help? So what I'm saying is this backing from the Vermont Virtual Learning Academy is phenomenal. Uh, these teachers, the, the curriculum's there, the resources are there. The, uh, and there's also, you know, there's pen and paper stuff so that they would have, you know, they would print it out if they could. Uh, or they can mail them home. Um, but there's, it's a really, uh, great opportunity for teachers who are interested in taking. This, uh, opportunity as well as for our students. Who really, uh, the parents really feel it necessary to keep them home for a hundred percent remote learning. But keep them connected with their friends on a Zoom meeting once a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else Cheryl?
No, that, that was my question. Thank you very much. Well, I guess I would make a quick point to, to assert this, um, just to say quickly that the, the teachers who are. Working with the children in the hybrid model are not doing this. They're fully focused on the children who are coming to the building. And then they're supporting the other three days of the school week. So this is a separate program offered through the supervisory union. For those who want a fully remote option. I'm just asking, verify that, please.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else Cheryl?
No, thank you.
I want to, I want to, uh, issue a, a clarifier here if I may. Um, as the Union High School's representative to, uh. The, uh, River Valley Technical Center, um, I have been working with what is actually the Vermont. Virtual Learning Cooperative since its inception, which I think is about twelve years now. Um, the, um, Tech Center, R V T C, River Valley Technical Center is actually home base. At least at this point in time for V T V L C. And if we have people who are, uh, now. Uh, very interested in what V T V L C is up to. And mind you, it began as an on-demand online high school for Vermont. You can go to V T V L C dot org and get quite a bit more information. You did a great job, by the way, with her presentation. It is really truly a dynamic program. And, uh, A O E, um, uh, tasked the director Jeff Renard to, uh. Expand it radically so that we could cover, um, K through twelve and not simply, uh, um, high school age kids. Um, I, uh, going to ask you Priscilla if you have questions. Are you with me Priscilla? I'm going to come back to Priscilla and I am going to ask Deb Wright if you have questions Deb.
I'm not sure based upon what I saw on the chat, um, from Chris Pratt, whether or not there was any point because it seems a fait accompli. Here and that there is no, there is no real choice. We are blowing off steam, but in reality, um, we don't have a choice. And that is what I'm seeing here. Um, I'm greatly concerned about the students. I'm greatly concerned about students who have drug addicted parents. Um, who are forced now to be home and will continue to be so even during the school year when I would anticipate they would have a safe haven. Um, so I really don't have any questions since it doesn't appear that we have any choice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Deb. Um, Jessa West Clark, then I'll go back and see if, uh, Priscilla is, uh, still here. Jessa, question?
Priscilla, I think is having issues with her mute button.
Okay.
Did you fix that Priscilla?
Yes.
Do you want, you can go.
Oh, well, um, uh, it sounds like, uh.
Just wait, Jessa.
Priscilla, so we're ready.
Okay, um, Jessa, if you asked me for information, I do apologize. I did not get an email from you. Seeing that, um, because I did get an email from, every email that I got today, I tried to answer today. There was one person that I couldn't open hers, so I didn't answer that one. So let me at least start with that. Um, let me comment too. Um, there, you made some comments on Georgia. My niece is in Georgia and she's starting school with her, um, class full-time. Um, and I, you know, uh, not all the students are coming and they are distancing. So they're doing the same thing that we're doing here. Tennessee, my grandchildren have, have been in school. And in daycare all the time that they've been there because my daughter is working there. Florida, high COVID, as all of you know, uh, the, some of the districts are closed. My daughter's district, which is right above that. Um, uh, they're open with a choice. They can do virtual or in school. They have a four-week option where they do that for four weeks. And then they'll, they will look at it and they can change. They cannot change during that time. Hybrid guidelines emphasize the difference in, that if, there's a difference in schools. And in the school districts and the school districts need to be accounting for diversity of the youth. If we go with a full, um, hybrid like, like was suggested from primary up through. High school, we're not providing that and that's not in the hybrid guidelines. So that kind of flabbergasted me when I got the. Uh, information on the hybrid only on this Monday and I was on the task force and on two of the subcommittees. I can't say that enough times. It was never presented to me as a member of that task force. Um, so I don't know where, in fact, our academic committee mentioned three half-days and then going to full-time. That's, and I have that in writing. I have that in the document that we made out and submitted to the, the superintendent. On the, that Friday when they were due. So it surprises me for, and we keep commenting that all. Forty-seven, fifty-fourty, eight-fifty, whatever it is, members worked on that hybrid model because it was a shock to me to see it. I'm seeing in the chat room that a lot of parents are saying, you know, that, there was one particular. That two days of instruction and then a remote and two days of homework. Lessons was not nearly as good as the virtual one that's being presented today. And the, the virtual one certainly does provide you a lot of options with, with contact with teachers. I will comment on that. Our special needs kids can go four days under the hybrid plan while our other kids who also need this time in the school are, are. Kept from doing that. That bothers me. Um, TB has been, tuberculosis has been around for many years. Hospital, anybody who works in a hospital, as I know very from firsthand experience, my own home here. With someone who is now going and working in a hospital, has to be tested for tuberculosis. It is a disease and it does kill people as well. And so there are other things out there besides this COVID that we're going to work on. Are we going to worry about everyone? And stay out of school forever? It's a good question. Oh, five point five hours is what is required for children in grades K, uh, not K. Yours is lower, first and second is lower, in grades three through twelve, five point five hours of instruction. On a daily basis are what is required for children to be receiving. And I, I know they've relaxed the requirements, but the hybrid does not provide for that. I understand the problems in opening, but school drix, school districts have the authority to make those decisions. And only the school districts have the authority. That was in the directive that was sent down again yesterday by the A O E. So asking for a vote tonight is not something that we should even be considering. It, it is not a legal option for what, what is being done. I can read it right off the, the D O E comment. School districts will have the authority to decide which instructional dispositions will be implemented in their schools. It's right there. Right there. It's underlying. You know, and, and to ignore, I do not want that ignored. I was accused in the, in the chat. Of ignoring something in, in my stuff from, by the Rockingham Board. Which surprised me because I said nothing about not following the guidelines of social distancing and following those guidelines. What I do want is I really want to know the numbers of the parents that will be. In. Planning to be in the schools. If we can get that before school start, we can make the decision sooner. But if we have to wait till that first week, then we should wait till that first week so that we know what we're dealing with. Because if you've got. If you've got a class that normally holds, like I know there's something graft in that normally holds ten or eleven. And only three parents are going to send their kids. You're going to have two on one day, on the two first days of the week, maybe and one the other day? That's, that's really kind of silly. And that's what we're looking at. And that's what we absolutely have to know. To be able to plan to open the schools and plan to get ready for school to start. Providing a five-day program does not force any parent to send their child. A hybrid plan does not say what happens after six weeks either. Um, I would think that we're heading into maybe flu season and we're heading into, you know, a later thing. And there's probably going to be a push to just continue that. I don't think that. Two days of instruction for six weeks, which is twelve days instead of what, five times six, thirty days? Provides nearly the educational program that I would want my child to be in. It's really disconcerting to me from that standpoint. And that's kind of why I'm kind of pushing for the other, finding out the numbers. And then going from there. Dr. Fousey did say that children should be in school. And I, I heard what was being said, but. Dr. Fousey did say that they should be in school. I am listening to this group of parents, yes. But what about that, uh, that half of that eighty-three percent that Chris Hudson said, said they wanted their kids in school? And half of those said they wanted their kids in school full-time. You know, there's a reason they, they want them there. They want them to get their education. And I, I recognize that, you know, social issues may be your top priority. And that's okay. And if so, then, you know, maybe two days a week is, is enough. But a first grader is not going to easily learn to read in two days a week. Kindergarteners can fare better. And preschoolers definitely because they are under that kind of a program anyway. But our primary students, I think, deserve a little more education than what's being proposed under this plan.
A point of order, this isn't Cheryl Charles. I wonder if the chairman, uh, David, are you still connected?
I am still connected and I, uh, was taking the time to hear, um, Priscilla.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so it's, it's not at all inattention because I always pay attention, um. When Priscilla is speaking because I have a great deal of respect for her as an educator. Um. And a board colleague. Um, so, uh, Jess, I'm going to ask you if you have questions. Thank you for yielding. Uh, your time to Priscilla. We're going to be back to you. Then I want to, uh, check in with, uh, Jack and Margot and Melissa. So are you ready Jessa?
I am ready and I, I do have a few questions. Um. One of the things I agree with Priscilla on is that it's not been made clear. The three days of remote learning is definitely not remote instruction. Because the teachers for those kids will be teaching the in-person class on Thursday, Friday. So there is that sort of discrepancy. Lynn had said five days of lessons. But I don't think those are lessons. Um, Lynn, you also made mention of project-based learning. And I don't know if that's exactly what you meant because that's a very specific thing that we have yet to introduce into our elementary schools as far as I know, or at least not all of them. Um, Heidi Chase was talking about parents' choice earlier and I do agree there needs to be choices for parents. But there's also, we have a lot of parents that are refusing to accept the liability of their travel to far-off lands that they're doing right now. Um. And it should be parents' choice to not have their kids in school with their kids too. The other, um, couple of questions I had was, well, one, so the high school. A group and B group, two days in, three days out. They can't get all their classes in two days, but there's not going to be actual remote instruction? Or is the high school going to be taught differently than the elementary and middle grades?
Mr. Clark, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. Chris, you are recognized.
So, um, what I am, um, directing my teachers to do is, is to, um, develop lessons. Um, and instructional strategies and we have ways to do that. I can probably elaborate more on this at the high school board meeting, but. Um, in which the students that are at home will connect with their teachers and. We have the capacity to live stream some of that. It's not necessarily going to be that because we also have a number of teachers. Who actually are trained and qualified to teach V T V L C and, um, and online, um, lessons. So. While I'm saying we have the capacity, it's, that, that's not necessarily the one and only way that students will engage with direct instruction on all five days. But it's nice to say that we have ways to pull that off. Um, and there was a comment in here, I think, about videoing students. That would not involve videoing students. That would involve live streaming the instruction, um, and if anybody, then just the teacher. Um, but we do have ways to pull that off.
Okay, Chris. David, Molly's been having her hand up for kind of a while. I don't know if you missed.
In just a minute. Um, the only other question, well, there are so many questions. But the other question I had regarding the online option through V T V L C. Is that the initial information given to the board, we were talking about numbers of seats. Because part of the agreement with V T V L C is that we provide a teacher for X number of children, fifteen or twenty, that sign up for that. And then Lynn made mention of offering the slots with V T V L C. First to teachers who might have, um, health issues that would keep them out of classrooms, et cetera. But is that going to be acceptable to the unions? Is that fair to the teachers? Have those issues been, issues been ironed out yet? And if we get three hundred or four hundred kids who want that option. How is the rest of the district going to get by with that number of teachers committed to V T V L C for a year? Um, I don't know if that was answered for us as well. And I guess with my final thing as a board member, I know there was around fifty people on this committee. Which honestly, I think is too big for an effective committee, but. I mean, as Priscilla mentioned, there was information she didn't get. The plan as presented to us initially. Um, was really more of a set of guidelines. Not a plan on how they were going to get there. There was deliverable items that were listed as being something they wanted. But not a plan as to how those were actually going to happen. Um, I'm assuming there's a more detailed plan coming out, but even something as simple as the temperature screenings that were required to do before kids get on the bus. Um, people were wondering if that was going to be paras, if we were going to have to hire back paras. If that was going to be a different group, if the paras were even qualified to do that or willing to do that. And none of those questions have been answered for us so far as boards that are going to be voting on these plans. Um. And I'm, I'm hoping there is more information forthcoming very soon for everyone involved. Because these are, these are just huge decisions for our families. And as Deb pointed out, we have families that. Are not in places where they can make these decisions. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping everyone will end up getting what they need eventually, but I, I'm just worried that won't happen.
David, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please, Chris.
So as far as the teachers, um, like I said before, it's changed since the, the Rockingham meeting because we're trying to find. Um, as many slots as we can. as many slots as we can. And regards to the teachers is that we're not forcing any teachers to, to do anything different. What we're trying to do is, um, keep them employed, because, you know, their option is under the, the new, Leave Act into the COVID that they passed. Um, it's, it, it wouldn't benefit us losing them as teachers or them financially. So we want to work with those teachers first. And if, you know, so we're not forcing them, they would agree to it. So as far as, um, the other, the other part that you talked about was with the paras and the screening and everything. We, I can't, I can't ask and hire paras back until I know what the plan is. And I can't know what the attendant, what parents are going to want to do until they have a plan. Parents, parents can't decide what route they're going to take until it's offered to them. If, if you offer, you know, if you, if you took and said, I'm going to offer, uh, everyone's going to go back to school, well, the parents are going to, you know, we're going to have a much different view of how many kids are coming back. We say we have the hybrid, we're going to get a different amount of kids. We can't move forward until the board makes a decision. Because I know you want those answers, but we can't get those answers until we have a planning place. So, um, yes, you know, as far as the plan, it is a plan. It's not, the no plan right now is going to be perfect. And we, if it's not in there, you know, it's cited in there. That's, the sites are saying, this is how we're going, going about doing the screening. If the plan is approved, or whatever plan is approved, and we have kids coming back on any level, is that it's, as the state says, they have to be screened at the first point of contact. First point of contact would mean they would need to be screened before they get on the bus with the temperatures. And, you know, if whatever plan is approved, we'd be using paraeducators to be health monitors on the bus that'd be assigned to a nurse. And then when they're on the bus, we could use them, um, in the schools. But we're at a standstill until we know what direction the board wants to go.
I think that's part of the disconnect, that we were expecting a fully fleshed-out plan, only because if we vote for a particular option, although it's the local boards doing the voting, and we say, we want to do this, and we give it back to get the actual plan, what happens if you come back and say, sorry, we don't have the staff to do that?
Well, we, I can understand what you're saying.
I mean, I, I know, but.
The chicken or the egg? It's like, the plan that you have is, is the plan. There's no other plan on the back burner in regards to how we're going to do things. Anything, the plan is in there and we'll be following all the state guidelines and the CDC guidelines for, for screening, for social distancing, you know, for temperature-taking, everything. But we can't move forward with getting more people in place until we know whatever the plan is, whether it's the hybrid or whatever.
So you didn't work out all three plans fully?
No, because based on the information we had and working with all the task force, and I, I might add that, is that the academic team, they did propose some sort of hybrid. It might not have been the exact hybrid that they wanted, but it wasn't just up to the academic team to make that decision. It was up to all the, all the task force. I received all their draft work, they got it to me. And based on all the information there, all the data I'm receiving from parents, the best option was the hybrid plan. The, if, and the data shows, it is pretty much well-split. We have about 100 families right now who would take 100% remote option. And we have about 160 families, you know, who had taken the survey, would want a hybrid option. And another, almost dead even, would want the 100% in. We went with the hybrid model, because we cannot have all the kids in all the buildings and meet the social guideline rules. And if we can't have kids in the buildings, because we can't not meet the social, the social distancing rules, then that, that's not even an option. So you have two options. You have the, the hybrid option, and you have the total remote option that we've been working on, but with, with improvements. And because we, we, I can't come up with an option if it's not following state guidelines. I can't put people in buildings and putting them, too many in there. We'll put them less than six feet or even three feet. So you should have the two options. You already have the hybrid option, and now, and previously you had the full remote option.
Okay. And then the last thing, well, is people really want to see a mock-up of the classroom. With, we know there's a lot of things that need to be removed and desks moved around. And I think there's a lot of parents that want to see what that's going to look like, because they don't know what to expect, especially after seeing the, um, the back-to-school video from Florida, showing what it's going to be like for their kids maintaining distancing and the screening and what their classroom is going to look like. If we could try to get that, it would be fantastic. And then I think this has been asked already. What, um, is the SU board actually voting on one of these plans? Because plans need to be approved by local districts, from what the AOE said. However, the SU provides special ed for all the districts.
Well, I, you know, yes, that, that is accurate. The role of the SU board with the representation from each board, they should be able to approve it, because that's why you vote members onto the SU board to make these decisions. Because for every, I'll put it this way, if there's not some certain, we don't make a decision tonight. But that's why I said, if you can't make a decision on the hybrid, then I would ask that the board say, now the decision is we're 100% remote. Because we're, we're up against a deadline here. It's not fair to any of the educators in the building who are trying to.
They can't make that decision.
Um, go ahead, I'm done.
Okay. Jessa, any further questions?
No, I'm, I'm all set. If you could just clarify what the SU board votes on.
Well, we're evolving in that direction, Jessa. I, that's a, that is a discussion we're going to have to have before the vote. And we will have that discussion. That's presuming we have a vote tonight. I still have a few people to get to here, and then we'll get down to the question of, of vote. Molly Bannack, are you in the room?
Yeah.
You are recognized, Molly.
So I know what, I know I'm not a voting member of the SU, but I'm the chair of the high school board. And I've listened to this whole meeting and read all the things that Chris sent to us. And I think as a board member, I have a pretty good idea of what administration and teachers and parents are all going to go through, and what we have to do to get our children into school. And I've heard all of this tonight, and it's almost time where we need to move on. But I'm on my chance too, so. We, I, I'm a believer right now of the hybrid. I think we need to try, I think that it's not fair to, we're disrespecting the 45 people that worked for two months on this program. If we don't at least try it, we have to get the, Priscilla, stop. I can see you, you know I can see you, just give me my time. We have had all summer and we worked. And everybody is, is doing the best they can. There's so many rules that we have to go by. This isn't just because, you know, we don't want our children in school. Of course we want our children in school. If anybody has an agenda of why they're on a school board, that's what everybody says. We all have an agenda. Well, my agenda is to educate every kid to the fullest we can. So do I think the perfect thing is for them to be home two to three days a week? Absolutely not. But I just had a little girl graduate from our schools. And if she was in school right now, I would be supporting the hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Jack Brier?
There we go. Yeah. I think that, uh, one of the things that we are, we're looking at a lot of the flaws in this program. And Lynn and Chris, you know, to be honest, it's kind of a mess. But I think to be fair, to be fair, uh, the other states have provided their administrators with fully fleshed-out cookbooks. The, uh, the guidance manual for options from New York State runs over 150 pages. I don't think Lynn or Chris have got a 150-page cookbook from anybody. I think that they were asked to improvise this program, sort of while they're trying to do everything else. And while at certain points it looks it, I hope that my fellow board members will be a little more forgiving for the fact that it's not very complete and probably isn't going to be until September 7th. It's just reality. Now, you know, we can be critical of the fact that it isn't very complete, that there are a lot of holes in it. There are a lot of things that, what-ifs that haven't been worked through. But they do need at least some sort of framework from which they can continue to plan. That's really is a role for the SU. The SU by law has responsibility for curriculum. What we're talking about is curriculum and instruction. The curriculum and instruction base level curriculum instruction program for the SU. That is our job. We can't say, oh, gosh, uh, we'd like somebody else to do it. It's our job. Individual districts can refine and improve on, uh, as for modifications. But we can't have a different plan for, uh, for each school, because we have employees, teachers that are hired by contract, paras that need to know what the plan is, a special ed staff that need to know a framework. We can't build four different programs. There just isn't the bandwidth to do it, and it wouldn't be a good idea anyway. So the only thing I would ask my administrators to bear in mind is not to get too rigid about these plans. You guys are improvising and will be right down to the last moment. I hope that you can find ways to accommodate parents that will also be trying to revise their decision and may continue to do so. You know, in college, they let you take a course for a week or two and drop out and change your course. And I think that maybe we need to be thinking about ways to accommodate, uh, parents that aren't really sure and won't be sure as of tonight, what plan they want to be in. They don't necessarily want to be stuck teaching at home. They don't know anything about the learning collaborative and whether it's really right for them. They haven't tried the hybrid model, because nobody's tried the hybrid model. And we need to be able to give parents a chance to try before you buy. And asking people right off the bat on the first day to commit to a full semester of program X versus program Y, I think probably is unrealistic and unfair. And I hope that you can find ways to make certain that, uh, parents who try something and find it's not working for them can make a switch fairly early in the program without forcing them to be there for a whole semester. So I got.
Thank you, Jack. Margot? Kia?
Uh, thank you, David. I, I think Jessa addressed the question that I was going to ask about, um, having support staff to assist at having enough staffing in the buildings. I think no matter what model is chosen, that we're going to need, despite the budgets, um, we're going to need the support in the classrooms to help with every child's being able to progress and learn and move forward. And if we don't have adequate staffing, um, whether it's in the classrooms directly or taking the temperatures or on the buses, we're going to run into severe difficulties and have high burnout among staff that are in the building. So no matter what model we go with, I guess I'm going to encourage that all the boards be thinking about that, you know, despite what our budgets might currently look like, we are going to have to be supporting our staff that are in the buildings with appropriate levels of staffing. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Margot. Melissa Carlstrom, are you with us?
I am. Um, I guess I just want to reiterate that in the document, it's that August 11th is the final day that anyone can sign up for remote instruction. And I think that is an important date for everybody on the call to hear that that is in our document, and you only have a few days if that's what you want. Um, and I think my biggest concern with the plan as it is right now is about our workforce and our staff retention as well. And I think that this will ought to consider providing childcare for their teachers and paras at children, so that we can make sure that they go to school and that the teachers can be there. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Melissa. I've, I've tried to, um, moderate the meeting tonight and not be part of the discussion, but I am going to make some comments now. And I want to back up 10 or 12 years. I know that Jack Brier will remember this. There was a point in time where the Union High School Board discussed, uh, opening an eighth-grade academy. And that would have been for the high flyers at the middle school, um, eighth graders, obviously, who were socially, emotionally, and academically ready to take on the rigors of high school work. There was, there was a financial angle to that, because if they came up as eighth graders and, um, did our eighth-grade academy in a practical matter, they would graduate from high school in three years, which would have been a savings for taxpayers. I mentioned that, because this is one of those out-of-the-box ideas that maybe needs to have another look. We've had discussion about, um, the outdoor model for schooling. I haven't seen anything fleshed out on that, but I'm certainly hoping that, irregardless of the model that we choose, short of complete remote instruction, that that gets serious consideration. Want to, uh, say, and, and I have to be upfront with the board about this. And that is that I do agree with Priscilla about the importance of the continuity of particularly K6 programming. And I actually hold the belief that it's maybe more important to get them in on a full-time basis, adequately distant than it is to have your high school kids in the high school. Because I think the high school kids, by and large, would be able to handle a remote program. And if that created sufficient space so that we could really, uh, do the work with the early elementary that needs doing, I think that would be a benefit. I have a, you know, a question as to exactly what the transportation, uh, plan looks like. Um, I agree once again with Priscilla that we do need to know what the actual numbers are. But I also realize that that will be highly contingent on, um, what the board decides to do tonight. I do, uh, have concerns about what the status of our PPE supplies are. That's personal protective equipment. Sorry for the, uh, jargon there, but probably most people know that already. And, uh, you know, I have real concerns about the adequacy for that. I also, um, uh, happen to believe that ultimately, policy decisions are vested with the local boards. And it is entirely possible that we could end the night, um, with a, uh, decision by the WNASU board that would not, um, not meet the expectations of a local board who might decide to move in a different direction. That's a real concern for me, because I think it does get back to some questions around equity, um, as well as obviously the staffing component. And I would hate like heck to, um, set one district up for the ire of, um, well, particularly staff members, um, because they would feel that there was, um, and inequity there as well. However, in spite of all of my reservations, I do happen to agree with Chris Pratt that we really need to act on it now, because we have a drop-dead date coming Tuesday in terms of signups for, uh, full remote instruction. And it will not be possible to determine either the numbers of kids who are going to be in school or the staffing that will be necessary to support them unless this, uh, board makes a decision tonight. So with all of my reservations and my concerns for the legitimate concerns of Rockingham School Board, and believe me, I have a huge amount of empathy for those, um, I would like to, um, entertain a motion now to approve the administration, uh, school re-entry plan.
Point of order before you do that. We do not have the authority to do that, okay? And so I, I definitely object. We could find out by asking, simply asking parents to commit and giving them the choice. Tell us, do they want, do, will they send their child in a hybrid? Will they send their child in the other? They could say yes to both, they can say no to both, then we would have the numbers. And with the, with the. And with the, with the, uh, your, the union board, elementary union board meeting tomorrow, they would be able to make their decision, which is appropriate because that's based on what the directive is. Then the high school meets on Monday. Chris has already indicated, you know, that that could be very different. So it's, you know, and with 83% saying they would send, want their children in school, but it being half and half, hybrid and full, we never found out if they'd send them under each. And that's what we need to know.
Okay.
Because that would tell us what we can do. And we wouldn't have to come to this program or the other.
Is recognized here. And as chair, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to poll the members, the voting members here as to whether they wish to overrule the chair's move to seek a vote or not. So, um, Jason Terry, do you support the chair's call for a vote?
Yes, I do. And Priscilla, sometimes the juice doesn't work the squeeze. Let it go.
I'm, I'm going to ask members to address their comments to the chair. Okay, Priscilla?
No, because my board said that I was to vote a certain way anyway, and this is not an appropriate time to take a vote.
Thank you, Priscilla. George Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brenda Farkas?
Yes.
Deb Wright? I'm going to come back to Deb and I'm going to do a game of elementary. Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Thank you. Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Jessa West Clark?
Yes.
Deb, are you with us?
Yeah, and my vote, no.
No, okay. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, yes, I have two no. So the chair is sustained in calling for a motion to approve the school reentry plan. I would like to have a member make a motion on that, please.
Lynn Morgan, I make a motion that we approve the plan.
Okay. Do I have a second?
That the plan that includes the option for virtual learning?
It, yes, it, it would include the full remote option, George.
Thank you.
I'm a second. David, this is Cheryl.
I have a motion in a second. It's my belief that after three hours of discussion, that board members are fully informed on the question. So therefore I'm going to roll call members now and ask you how you vote. Brenda Farkas?
Yes, to the hybrid.
Thank you. Deb Wright?
No.
Okay. Jason Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Priscilla?
No, my board said no.
Okay. George Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Jessa, Wes Clark?
Yes.
Okay, I have one, two, three, four, uh, help me, one, two, three, four, five, yes. Um, I'm showing two no, which is confusing to me because I thought I had everyone represented here. One, two, three, four, five, six, okay, six yes and two no. So the, the motion does carry. And I, once again, want to thank all of the members for their very hard work tonight as well as a very unusual, not for this board, but certainly a high degree of collegiality, which is important. I want to ramble just a little bit further here and say that I think it is extremely important for administration to fill in the gaps, which have been pointed out tonight by a number of members. I'm also hopeful administration will be able to react more quickly to changing conditions on the ground than simply waiting six weeks to see what happens. I'm hopeful that if conditions are favorable, we can at least reopen for the younger kids as soon as possible. And I can't begin to say how much I appreciate the fact that 188 people are still in the room at this hour because it's been a tremendously long discussion. We do have a couple more items to take care of. Item seven is old business, business office and audit update. Chris, where are we with that? Chris Pratt?
Um, I've invited the auditors to attend the next WNASU board meeting at the end of the month. So at that point, any board members can ask questions in regards to the SU audit or individual school audits.
Okay, thank you, Chris. As always, if there are agenda items that board members would like to have considered at the next meeting, I'm going to ask you to get those in either to Chris or to Nicole, or certainly copy me on it and I will forward it to Nicole. We are down to director's comments. I'm going to start now with the non-voting members tonight. Molly Bannack? Are you with us, Molly?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Melissa Carlstrom?
I think she stepped away, David. I saw her get home.
Margo?
Yes, I'm still here. I just wanted to thank again the task force. That is a very difficult situation that they had to puzzle through a lot of different scenarios to come up with possible, possibilities for all of us to think about. And I want to thank again all of the participation from the community. I think that it's very important that we have participation at board meetings and it's been encouraging since we've been able to do an option to have board meetings online that we have seen much higher participation levels at meetings. And I hope that as we continue forward, that people continue to stay engaged, share their ideas and their opinions with the boards because it's very important that we hear from everybody as much as we can.
Thank you, Margo. Jack Prior? Thanks, everybody, for staying with us. It's been a very long meeting. I think it's always important to be guided by the science and we did that. I do think that Deb and Priscilla and several other people have made a real important point about we need to find ways to reach out to working-class parents who really are going, and parents that are at risk, families that are at risk. Because I don't think where we're at gets to that problem. We need to make that part of our solution. That's a big hole in this proposal. I'm confident that we'll figure it out. I caution my members that, like everything else, it solves a problem, it costs money. So be prepared for that discussion when we get there in the coming weeks. But thank you to everybody. Thank you, Jack. Deb Wright?
Yes, I thank everyone who has participated. And at first I thought maybe there was something wrong with the 45-member task force. But now after listening for several hours, I realized that they were hobbled in some ways, which I'm not going to go into now. In addition, I hope that we can live with the long-term ramifications of what's happened by making this choice while leaving some students and their families excluded.
Thank you, Deb. Cheryl Charles?
Well, I too want to thank the members of the task force. I want to thank everyone who came out from the community tonight and has hung in for this close to more than, more than two hours and all of that. Actually, three at this point. Thank you. Thank you all. I, I want to make just a quick comment about the hybrid model making it possible to practice physical distancing, wearing masks, hygiene, washing hands in smaller groups that will allow teachers and support staff, who I believe will be there as well, to really give personal attention to the children who are coming back in a far more manageable way than the full class complement would. That's my opinion. I know others have different opinions. I think the majority tonight obviously voted in support of the hybrid model with the remote option as well. So I know we all don't agree about all of this, but at the same time, I know we're all well-intended. And I want to thank everyone for your patience and your thoughtfulness throughout this process.
Thank you, Cheryl. Priscilla?
I'm disappointed in not providing the parents that, that put in there that they wanted full-time instruction. So I'm, I'm really disappointed that the, the board would try to go ahead and vote on something that leaves them out because they are truly without an educational program for their children with just doing the two days. They'll get more out of the remote, I agree. But also I am disappointed that, that you would violate what the AOE says it wants you to do. But it's okay.
Thank you, Brenda. Brenda Farkas?
I'm all set.
Thank you, Brenda. Lynn Morgan?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. George Smith? George, you still with us? Well, I'll try them one more time. Jessa, Wes Clark?
I just want to thank everyone who has come to the meetings and reached out to all of us. And remind everyone that the Union Elementary District has a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30.
Okay, thank you, Jessa.
It's at six.
Six, okay. George, are you here? I do not see you listed, okay. Jason Terry?
Yeah, hi. David, I really liked what you said about it needs to be looked at in six weeks or sooner. I hope, and hope's a powerful word, that we actually do that. I'm really disappointed in some of the integrity that I'm learning. And, you know, it was said tonight, if we don't vote on a hybrid, then it's going to be full remote. So we really didn't have a choice. And I'm just really disappointed that, you know, a couple nights ago, a gentleman made a rude, over-the-top rude comment to a female board member. And it's not only not been addressed, but it's been celebrated on social media. There's no place for any man to make a comment like that to a female in 2020. So it's a very cowardice act for that individual. Thank you.
Thank you, George. I was going to try to refrain from comment tonight, but I, I do need to point out that we had an exceptional meeting here tonight because it went long. We had people who were very much on different sides of the discussion and it remained civil. And I do have a concern that the social expectations, I believe, have changed. And behavior which is gender or race or economically based is no longer appropriate in a public forum such as a board meeting. So I do share Jason's concern about that. And once again, I want to, you know, thank this board for keeping it civil. Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Can I have one, please? Have a second, please?
Second?
Thank you, Lynn. All those in favor of adjournment, wave goodbye. Thank you all.
Bye.
Goodbye.